Let's do a roll call of attendance. I'm going to ask the committee members to go down the line, say their name and where they're from, just so all of you know who everybody is a little bit.
Sue Durkach, Centuria.
John Thompson, I'm the director of the Eppwood Library System.
Heather Wyatt, I'm the director of the Amory Area Library.
Christine Raffa.
Leanne French, Director of the Dresser Public Library.
Oh, I'm Anne Miller, I'm the director of the Osceola Public Library.
I'm Sue Leslie, I'm the director of the St. Croix Falls Public Library.
Okay, very good. So what I'm going to do now is entertain a motion to open the public hearing on the proposed 2025 to 2029 Polk County Plan of Library Services.
Christine makes a motion to open the public meeting.
Okay, and do I have a second?
Three and one second.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded to open the public hearing. Any discussion? Okay, no discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. And with that, our public hearing is open.
I'm going to take this.
Thank you. I forgot Amanda is not here, so we are missing one of our members, so we needed somebody to take the minutes. So I'm just going to give a brief overview. The committee met several times, reviewed the former plan of library service, took a look at some minor revisions for the proposed new plan of library services in Polk County. Do we have anyone here from the public who would like to make any comments on the proposed plan? It does not appear so. Do we have any supervisors in attendance or county staff that have any comments or questions on the plan? Yes, Supervisor O'Connell.
So what were the changes? Do we know what the, you said you did a few changes, do we know what they are?
It was mostly cleanup language and verbiage. We don't have a markup copy here for you. John, would you like to speak to that? John Isarik from the Indian Head Federated Library System is our advisor.
We added a table of contents.
Yes, we added a table of comments. We updated the data to reflect the most recent circulation data that was available after the 2024 annual report. The data that was in there was five years old.
We also put the legal names, libraries in this plan. They were listed by, some of the libraries were listed by their village names, and that's not actually how they are recognized legally.
So we cleared up a little housekeeping there?
Yeah, and other than that, I don't think there were any other substantive changes to the plan prior year.
In case you're wondering, there was no change in the request for the reimbursement rate. That was the same as what was in the previous plan, which was 100%. However, that has been reviewed at budget time every year and currently, over the past several years, that has stayed at 95% reimbursement rate. John, I understand that we did find just a couple of proposed changes that we wanted to make tonight. Would you like to review those after you, John met with our Corporation Council prior to our meeting? And so he has just a couple of proposed changes.
Just actually just one. In Section 4, Priority Number A, which still currently provide 100% reimbursement for each library established under Chapter 43 of Wisconsin statutes, located in Polk County, serving Polk County residents without a library. To clarify it and meet the intent of what the planning committee meant and to make sure it's consistent with language within the statute, we will be adding, to provide 100% reimbursement to each library established under Chapter 43 of Wisconsin statutes, locate, whose municipality is located in a hole or in part of Polk County, serving Polk County residents without a library. The Village of Turtle Lake, which does provide a library, is located in both Polk County and Barron County, and the intent of this plan and the two previous plans was to include Turtle Lake's library in that reimbursement model. And that, there's a difference of opinion whether it means the municipality is located in both counties or whether the physical library is located in both counties. So to clarify it, that's why we were going to add that specific language.
So it would be those two words? Wouldn't be it?
Yep.
Is that where the 95 would go now, though? But you want to go to 100?
No, it's, it's proposed at, it was 100, it was 100% in the previous plan, although Gen Gov reviews that every fall when they're working on the budget, and they have set it at 95% the past several years. So we're, we're proposing leaving it the way that it was, with the understanding that the Gen Gov Committee will review that on an annual basis like they have been. So it would be continuing the same practice that the county has had the past several years.
In the next line, the 70% states that you do those, is that correct? On two?
Maintain a reimbursement rate to libraries in adjacent counties at a rate of 70%. Jen?
Yep, that is consistent with what has been in the plan.
So the reason, if I can be recognized?
Yes, please.
The reason for that clarification is just the way that it was phrased talks about a library within the county. The library is within a municipality that's within the county, but the library itself is technically not within the county. It's, it's within Barron County. If the board adopts this plan as proposed with this change, it would contemplate the fact that Turtle Lake may not be within our county, but the Polk County Board is adopting the plan that essentially acknowledges it as if it were within the county. It follows seemingly the intent of the plan generally. The plan talks about Turtle Lake being a municipality within the county. It talks about the library within Turtle Lake. It, the plan talks about Turtle Lake and its circulation, et cetera. So it, it's just a clarifying thing where technically it doesn't fall within the county, but by adding that language to the plan, it would make it clear that the board intends that that library also be reimbursed at that 95 or 100%, versus the out-of-county 70%. So that's what that language tells us.
I think it's worth noting, too, and then I'll call on you, Brad, that other municipalities and counties in the area, for example, River Falls is in St. Croix County and Pierce County and a number of other ones that have, the municipality is in multiple counties where the library is located. It would also set this on to be consistent with the practice of what everybody else pretty much across the state is doing or has been doing.
Can I ask a question?
Sure. Sharon?
Is Barron County also reimbursing that library in Turtle Lake?
Yes, they do reimburse the library in Turtle Lake for the services that are in Barron County from the Barron County residents that use the library, and that is reimbursed at the Barron County rate that they review every year. So we are not reimbursing the Village of Turtle Lake's library. They're being reimbursed proportionally to the number of Polk County resident users and not the Barron County ones. Barron County reimburses that portion, if that is clear. Brad, you had a question?
So Sharon asked my question, but a follow-up. So when I look and we're paying 3423, I believe, is, is what we're paying into them. So if that's the case, we're just paying on page 15. We're paying the 3423 Polk County is on the number of Polk County residents that we have in the Village of Turtle Lake?
You want to answer that, John? Because I don't see what you're looking at, Brad. What, what page? Page 15. Oh, no, that's page 10.
15, when you're looking at the.
Which 15?
I was looking at those numbers.
So the funding that is going to Turtle Lake is based on the individuals that live in Polk County, that live in the area, don't have a public library. The county is just reimbursing 7,200 uses. And then, to kind of follow up on the previous question, each one of the libraries within Polk County do bill the adjacent libraries sold. For example, if Turtle Lake has individuals coming over from Barron County to use their library, they are getting money from Barron County for serving those residents. The intent of funding is to follow the persons where they live and pay that county, or pay that particular library they're using regardless of which library and which county it's in.
So an example I'll give is the Amory Public Library also receives reimbursement from St. Croix County, Deer Park area, or wherever in St. Croix County those residents come and use, the Amory, City of Amory Library, Barron County, Polk County, whatever. Dunn. Dunn County, Burnett County. So what this is, is it's a reimbursement for what the municipalities pay for people who live in rural areas to come into town and use our libraries and to support their use of our libraries. Because the libraries are open to everyone, not just people who live in the city of Amory. Amory Public Library is open to everyone, as it should be.
Then what statutory requirements for the percentage?
What was it?
The minimum required by statute is 70%.
70%.
Amory, Neighboring Counties, Barron County and.
St. Croix County reimburses us at 100%. Dunn and Barron are typically 70%, but sometimes at Dunn 75, sometimes 77.
And that's even though they're adjacent counties?
Not on counties. I do not know Burnett because I don't correspond with them.
Usually Burnett, in the rare times I've had circulation from Burnett, I've gotten 70% reimbursement. I don't know what they reimburse their home libraries. I can't answer that question.
There's, there's nowhere that shows us what we're paying Turtle Lake, then. I mean, because it shows that they have 1,043 population, paying the 3423.
I don't believe so. Actually, can Claire, can your someone, or Don, can you pull it up and see what we cut the check for in Turtle Lake?
So I'm paging. Turtle Lake's cost per circulation is $8.48. Their Polk County non-resident, only Polk County non-resident circulation was 7,293. If you reimburse them at 100%, that would be 61,874 and change.
So the circulation, that 7,293, that's the number of items. It's not a population. That's the number of items that Polk County residents checked out and used from the Turtle Lake Public Library.
So it's not so much a population count as it is a usage count?
So people who live in the town of Beavure come into Turtle Lake and use the library. People in the Village of Clayton, in the town of Clayton, they, Clayton doesn't have a library. They come to Turtle Lake and use the library. Anyone from any county in the state can come and use any library they want to.
What, what is the charge for that? So there's 7,000, 8.48? So if I go check a book out, I pay 8.48?
No, you don't pay anything at all. They don't, there's no charge to use a library. What, what this does is, this is the state's, the statutory way for the state to make the local municipalities whole. So for example, I'll use you for an example, Kim, if you don't mind too much. You live in the Village of Osceola. Another way to look at this is, it costs you money in your taxes to support the Village of Osceola Public Library. But why should you pay for people who live in the townships to come in and use the library? The Village of Osceola Public Library. It's a reimbursement. If, this is not anything where any library is like making money off from this, even if it 100% was being paid.
By who?
It's a reimbursement.
Who's the reimbursement from? That's what I'm asking.
So the reimbursement is.
The state, so I pay my taxes to the state, too? So I'm still paying it?
No.
No? This isn't state money?
No.
It's county money.
This is county money.
The county.
But I mean, I'm asking, you check out 7,200 bucks, okay? Round it off. So those, how many, and those people were from out in the country. Why wouldn't you charge them $2 to check something out?
Because it's a public library, and a public library is free for all.
So there is no free in this world, if you know that.
People are paying taxes somewhere.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. It's coming from somewhere. So you can't say I'm not paying for it. I'll pay for it.
So if you've ever seen the levy, Don, maybe you want to speak to this? When communities get their levy, there'll be a county library levy. When they get their levy from Polk County, it'll say county library levy. That's the money that the townships pay to the county for the county to turn around and reimburse. Osceola, Turtle Lake, Amory, Dresser, Frederick, Miltown, Awesome Lake, Centuria, to reimburse the libraries in the county. So the county is actually kind of a pass-through. The county levies this on the town, the towns pay the county, the county turns around and reimburses the local municipalities for this. Don, am I on track here?
You are, and you'd asked a question previously. For 2024, the county paid 35,368.
Yes, thank you.
And the year before, and my machine happened a bomb, right? Looking it up, the first two numbers were 26. It was 26,000 and something.
198.
26,198 and 97 cents.
So for example, if, if, if you're the clerk in a, in a city or a village that has a library, when you get your levy from the county, there is no library levy on there because you own the library, the municipality levies more than what the library's, county library levy would be. So it's my understanding when the county library system was abolished some years ago, and this is before my time here, that then statutorily, this is what kicks in. So under, by statute, we are obligated to provide library services to rural residents who live within the county. They come in and they use the libraries in the villages and the cities, and this is a reimbursement. And of course, you know, as we all know, who live in villages and cities, that without the support of our local residents who live out in the country, who live in the townships, none of us would have much of a city or a village without their support coming into our communities. So this is, is a way to provide partial reimbursement for the cost. It's not 100%. So it's still, even at 95%, it's still costing 5% for people outside the community to come and use the library. John, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Nope.
And please correct me if I'm wrong explaining anything or if I make any mistakes.
Our meeting starts.
We might maybe start our meeting.
Yeah, so if there aren't any more, this is not on the agenda for the county board to act on tonight. The Library Services Committee will be giving a presentation at the April Gen Gov meeting on this. After that, it will be on the agenda along with the statutory required resolution at the April regular county board meeting. So with that, there's no more questions from anyone here, and thank you for asking questions because libraries are complicated, that's for sure. If there's no more questions, I'm going to entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Christine, make a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Heather will second.
Okay, and there's been a motion made and seconded. Do we have any discussion? No discussion. With that, I will call for a vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And our public hearing is closed, and with that, I will look for a motion from the committee to add the edit of the two words.
You can't do that.
She didn't adjourn, she closed the public hearing.
Oh, closed the public hearing, excuse me.
Okay.
I thought you adjourned.
And with that, I will add for a motion, ask for a motion to revise the proposed plan to be sent to the Polk County Board for approval with the addition of the two words that we previously discussed, and I'm looking for what page it is on here. Page 11, Section 4, Number A, Number 1.
Fred shall make a motion that we send the proposal, Polk County Plan of Library Service, to the meeting in April with the change requested by Thompson on page 11. I don't remember what the word.
Whose municipalities are the two?
Add, located in whose municipalities. Paragraph 4, A1, located in whose municipalities.
Okay, is there a second on that motion? Okay, and any discussion? No? And with that, I will call for a vote. All in favor, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries, and with that, I'll entertain, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Also that motion.
Okay, motion, I can, motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. Any discussion? No discussion. I'll call for a vote. All in favor, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, and motion carries, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Another county board meeting, it's.
Eight.
Agenda, right. Not as. The regular meeting. Evidence of.
Yeah, the second here. Oops, your.
Go ahead.
The County Board of Supervisors, March 18th meeting notice, an agenda was posted in the Government Center Building in two places, posted on the county website on March 13th. In addition, on Thursday, March 13th, at 4:17 PM, the Office of the County distributed copies of such notice and meeting to supervisors and media via email.
How's her?
That is appropriate notice.
You see the evidence? Our roll call.
Brad Olson.
Here.
Doug Rowdy.
Here.
Steve Wardle.
Here.
Cam Garvey.
Here.
Tracy LeBlanc.
Here.
Cam Ruck.
Here.
Sharon Kelly.
Here.
Jeremy Hall.
Here.
Cam O'Connell.
Here.
Tony Johnson.
Here.
Jay Luke.
Here.
Frances Dunkinson.
Here.
Russ Arcand.
Here.
Keith Karpinski.
Here.
And John Bonaprise.
He's online, he's got to unmute himself, though.
He's joining me, the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and to a simple, liberal, and justice for all. Thank you. Motion on the agenda is presented. Motion, the expression, all in favor, same sign. Matters offered for adoption on the consent agenda.
Motion to approve, sent agenda.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any public comment?
Have anybody from the public that's interested in commenting on any subject? Hearing none, seeing none, with presentation of family-friendly workplace. Award.
I'm Kim Greer, I'm the HR Director for the county, and I have with me Neil Klein, who is part of Family Friendly Workplaces, and the county recently decided to participate in this program with Neil as a way to show support for our employees and their families. And while going through this exercise, it was determined that we have actually reached a gold level standard for our benefits that we offer, and I wanted to give Neil the opportunity today to present to you what this program means to the county, and at the end, we'd like to present the board with an award to show that we've reached this gold standard. So, good to you.
Thank you. Wonderful to be here. Thank you for having me this evening. I'm very excited to have the chance to talk to you all about the program and what we're working to do, and I did bring the hardware, so it's legitimate. And I think I'll work with you, you're, do I use this to advance the slides?
You can use that, otherwise, Claire.
I can use this? Okay, awesome. Well, Family Friendly Workplaces is a nonprofit. We're based down in St. Croix County, serves St. Croix, Pierce, Polk, and Burnett Counties, and the primary program we run is an employer certification program, and so that's the program that we're here to kind of talk about. But before we get into that, I want to spend some time talking about some underlying demographic data that really helps explain why this is, why there is a problem and how we're trying to work to address it. So that's the handout that's in front of you. It corresponds to the slide deck I made, so as we go through it, then you don't have to try and squint at these slides, you can squint at the piece of paper. I always like to go to the next slide. That's going to work.
I can just do it.
You got me? All right. We go to the next slide. I always like to start these presentations out, you can leave it right here, by talking about what we at Family Friendly Workplaces believe, which is that, which is that families are central not only to the individuals that make up those families, but also to the communities that are built from those families. And so if we can strengthen families, we've got an opportunity to positively impact a lot of folks, and we work through employers really for two reasons. The first is that if you think about from an HR perspective, we talked maybe about the concept of covered lives, like how many people are on your insurance plan or, the number of people that are connected to a job at the county is actually really quite high, when you start thinking about nieces and nephews and cousins and grandparents and everyone else that are impacted by the jobs that the county has to offer, and so we can impact a lot of folks by strengthening benefits for families. The other reason is because we've got a long-term shortage, and so that data that I referenced is what we're going to really get into here to really place this in the proper context. So if you go to the next slide, I'm going to start big and then we'll kind of zoom back in. So the 2020 census was completed four years ago. They finally turned out information, the state did, the Department of Administration turned out updated demographic projections based off the 2020 census in January. I always joke the speed of government, we got her done eventually. But what this does is it shows the Wisconsin's total population projections, and the interesting point here is that in 2020, we peaked. We peaked at about 5.89 million people, according to the 2020 census, and from there, we're projected to start kind of a gentle decline, and by 2050, we should be around 5.71 million people. And that's a really important piece of context to hold in mind as we kind of get into this. as we kind of get into this, because there really are two things that are causing it. The first is that we're having a lot of folks retire. And the second is that we're not having a lot of kids. And so if we start on the subject of retirees, if you want to go to the next slide for me, the Department of Administration in their report put out this map. And this map shows the percentage of each county's population. And then the state is over there on the left, that eighteen number. This chart's showing the percentage of each county's population that is in retirement in twenty twenty. So the way to read this is for Polk County, twenty-two percent of Polk County's population was over the age of sixty-five. So that's the standard that we're using to describe retirement. If you want to go to the next slide, that is what the percentage of the population is projected to be in retirement in twenty thirty. It's five years from now. That's an eight that's an eight-point increase for Polk County. And it could be worse. You could be Iron County, you know, at forty-one percent or whoever's next to them. I'm not sure who that is. If you go to the next slide, it's the same data for twenty forty. And you'll notice that by twenty forty, Polk County's now gone up to a full third of the county is in retirement. And then if you go to the next one, by twenty fifty, we're now up to thirty-four percent of the population in retirement. And I present that to you just to put the increase in retirees into perspective, because it is a really serious dynamic. You maybe have heard the term the silver tsunami. This is what we're describing, is that there's just going to be a lot more retired folks around. The other component of this then is that we're having less kids. And so if you go to the next slide, that gets into fertility rates. And since about nineteen seventy-five, women in Wisconsin have been having less than one, less than two kids. I'm sorry, less than two kids. This most recent measurement in twenty twenty, the average number of kids per woman, which is what a fertility rate is measuring, was one point six. A naturally sustaining population rate is two point one. So if you want to think about, you know, it's kind of morbid, but you need to have slightly more kids than you do members of your currently existing population to maintain steady. We haven't had that in Wisconsin since nineteen seventy-five. And when you do that for a long time, you slowly begin to reduce the number of kids that are around. And in particular, since twenty ten, we've really experienced a drop-off in the number of kids that folks are having. Put those things two together. And if you go to the next slide for me, what I've done is I've mapped the percentage increase in population by county from twenty twenty to twenty fifty. You'll notice Polk County is negative. So from twenty twenty to twenty fifty, Polk County is projected to lose about twenty-two percent of its population. When you kind of take births and deaths and you just run the, run that math out. You'll notice we're not alone. Much of northern Wisconsin's in that scenario. But I'll point out even Milwaukee County, Waukesha County, down in the southeastern part of the state, is in a similar boat. Very few counties are experiencing or projected to experience population growth over over this time, which leads me to my next slide, if you would, which is a measure of what we call net workforce entrance. And this is where I think we can really kind of focus the minds. So the way that you calculate this chart, you take the number of fifteen to nineteen-year-olds that are coming into the workforce. So we're counting a fifteen to nineteen-year-old as workforce eligible. And then you subtract out the sixty-five to sixty-nine-year-olds who are leaving, right? So you've got the folks who are beginning to work and the folks who are retiring. And this chart is basically saying on net, is your workforce growing? Is it staying the same or is it shrinking? And if you'll hit the next button for me, I have color commentary around what twenty thirty means. Because this chart is not scaled. So in twenty thirty, this is based off the twenty ten census, we were projecting that the statewide workforce was going to grow by a hundred and twenty-nine souls, which is insane. Insane. Apart from common sense, if you looked back at twenty ten, we were adding thirty-four thousand people to the workforce that year. Now, this is the twenty ten census. So if you'll hit the next slide for me, that blue line is the update from the twenty twenty census. So you'll see that that projection has gone negative. If you want to hit another button for me, I call it super yikes. But you'll see in twenty thirty, that's actually a negative number. So that means more people are leaving the workforce than are entering it in that year. So on a statewide basis, that's the scenario we find ourselves in. If you'll hit the next slide for me, we have this data for every county in the state. And so these are the four counties we work in. And you'll notice that Polk and Burnett, Polk being this light blue line here, and then Burnett there, are both below zero through the entirety of the projection. So that means every year, more people are leaving the workforce than are entering it, which means that there are less people available to work in our communities today than there were yesterday. And there will be even less people tomorrow. And I point out St. Croix County here because St. Croix County is kind of the golden child of our area. They're adding population. They appear to be healthy in this way. But that's one of the critical distinctions is that population growth is not workforce growth. Because Polk, St. Croix County rather, not us, St. Croix County is adding folks who are fifty-five years old and up into their population. If you look at Hudson, they're actually experiencing declining enrollment. Every school district in our area is experiencing declining enrollment. And mainly, it's a function of retirees and, and folks who are further along in their careers moving into our area. So that's what's driving that population growth. If you go to the next slide for me. So what I did here, just to provide some additional context, and I don't know if this is in your pack or not, but I mapped net entrance as a percentage of each county population in the year shown. So this is just to give you a sense of what kind of performance other counties are experiencing. And I'll point out again that even if you look towards southeastern Wisconsin, this is Waukesha County. So right outside Milwaukee, they're losing workers too. And the map kind of undulates a little bit as you move through the timeframe, but it is a shared problem across the state. If you want to go to the next slide for me, one of the important caveats that that data does not include is it doesn't include the labor force participation rate. So that's just raw. That net entrance number I showed you is just raw, people coming in and people going out. But of course, not everybody's working. And so this chart is showing the labor force participation rate for Wisconsin since nineteen seventy-six. And we peaked in the late nineties at a labor force participation rate around seventy-four percent for Wisconsin as a whole. We're a full ten percentage points lower now, today, than we were back then. And as we begin to think about our labor force shortage and what we need to do to try and address it, we need to be hypersensitive to the things that cause that labor force participation rate to go lower. This is where childcare becomes a bigger issue, because there are people making a decision not to work because childcare, either they can't find it or it's too expensive to find. And so they don't think that working is worth it anymore. And that drives that labor force participation rate down in an environment where there are already less people to work. And so as we think about economic development and economic activity, that labor force participation rate is a really important thing to think about. And it also makes those net entrance numbers a lot worse, because it's roughly sixty-five percent of those people are actually working, if we take that number. If you'll go to the next slide for me, and I'm trying to rush through it so that I don't take up too much of your meeting. This is where we really want to drive home the point that what this chart tells us is that we have a long-term human resources shortage. And we need to be thinking strategically about how to try and address it. That shortage sits alongside a shortage in housing and a shortage in childcare. And pretty much anywhere you go in Wisconsin, those are the three things nobody has enough of. No matter where you are, no matter who you're talking to, from Milwaukee to here to Douglas County, nobody's got enough of those three things. And so what we do in our program is try to adopt an approach to address these challenges so that we aren't trying to swallow the elephant. So if you'll hit the next button for me, the first piece is this immediate term, and that's actually what this is. So by certifying employers, what we've done is we've gone through and we've benchmarked your benefits, the county's benefits, relative to the market. And that tells us the strength of your benefits. And again, your gold level, which means you're leading the market in the benefits that you offer. That can help you recruit and retain talent right now. Because obviously, you have human resources needs that need to be met. And anything you can do to become more competitive in the marketplace can be an advantage for you. If you click on the next thing for me, we then get into the medium-term piece, which is where we talk about talent attraction. Because right now, all of the five-year-olds that we're going to have have been born. They're all here. And so how do we get more five-year-olds to come here? And we kind of, I like the joke, if a five-year-old moves somewhere, they tend to bring their parents, right? So how do we get more young families in particular to want to move to our area? And that's where we talk about talent attraction. We talk about making a reputation for us as a family-friendly place. This is where outing becomes a really significant issue. Because if you don't have a place to put these people, pretty hard to get them to move here and address that workforce shortage. If you go to the next thing for me, then we're into the long term. And this is where we talk about early childhood in our program, because workforce development begins before kids are born. That's when they begin developing the skills that we rely on every single day in our local economies. That's when they show up to libraries and start learning how to read. That's when all of this important development is happening is in early childhood. And so if we don't get early childhood right, it makes it a lot harder for schools, makes it a lot harder for employers. I go to a lot of statewide, you know, employer meetings. There are employers that are converting safety manuals from written English into pictures, because their employees can't read them. This is not a hypothetical problem. These are challenges that employers in our communities and across the state are facing right now. And those problems begin in early childhood. So that's where we talk about early childhood. If you go to the next slide, I'm nearly done. That really brings us into this certification program that the county is participating in. And it's really designed to try and address those three timeframes and also to help employers recruit and retain talent that they need right now, because you guys are facing a difficult market alongside teachers, police officers, nurses, long-term care. I mean, if you go tick through all of the things that it's hard to find somebody to do, that list is pretty long and it's growing. And it's going to get worse. It's really kind of our message. And we need to think strategically about how we're going to fight it. If you go to the next slide, this is where I thank everyone who gives us money. Very appreciative of their help to keep the lights on and keep family-friendly workplaces going. We're pleased as well with the wide diversity of employers. We've got fifty-six employers in our program, or no, fifty-seven as of today. We got an application. Fifty-seven employers in our program across northwestern Wisconsin. We've been seeing a lot of really good growth in this. Polk County is the third county in the state to become certified as an employer. So good job and keep up the good work. And if you go to the next one, that's just my contact information. So I appreciate your time. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them. I also have my contact information there. So if anything comes up later, please don't hesitate to get in touch. But that's, that's my spiel.
Any questions?
Thank you for having me. And I think we're taking, are we taking a picture?
Ken.
Back to present.
Oh, go ahead.
Can we get a copy of your presentation?
You.
Okay, thanks.
You going to do a presentation?
Uh, yeah, anyone who feels like smiling with this and however we want to do it, I'm.
That's Jay's job.
That's Jay's job.
I'll come around to you. We can take one maybe back over there. Does that work for you? Brad is in a suit.
I get enough. All right.
To props for what you're going to be seeing here in a minute.
Got props?
You got props.
We got props.
We got props. Can't hunt, they double the price of the license.
Not yet. It is great. They're not going anywhere either.
You know, I watch it. Everybody does.
The dean. It's the governor.
It's the governor. They double the drug. See, the other half of my life. Bicycle and Sebastian's.
They pay.
They pay so well. Free ride?
You're on the roll.
Hello, everybody. My name is Brad Beerson. I'm with the Director of Polk County Tourism Council. And looks like that's a good, very good. I'd like to begin today by expressing my gratitude to Chair Luke and the rest of the board for accepting our request to come here today. We appreciate the chance to provide an update on our efforts to attract more visitors to Polk County, thereby supporting our local businesses and communities. Part of what Neil was just talking about was we've got people going like this on the chart. And I think if people knew all the good things about this county, they might want to, they might want to move here and maybe solve some of that. But I especially want to thank Supervisor Tony Johnson for his interest and leadership as just this week, we've launched the most extensive large-scale marketing campaign in our thirty-two years of existence. And that is live right now. So let's see if this works. I think you'll have to do, oh, back there, maybe. Nope, I guess you'll have to do it, Claire. Thank you. A bit of background. The Polk County Tourism Board recognized that after more than thirty years of serving the local tourism industry, it was time to refresh its focus. In twenty twenty-one, the board initiated a five-year strategic plan, and we commissioned a research project through the University of Wisconsin. This initiative was funded by a joint effort marketing grant secured from the state of Wisconsin, aiming to identify the key steps needed to position Polk County as a top destination for vacationers and weekend travelers. By twenty twenty-two, using insights from the research and community input, our strategic plan was developed. Next slide, please. The plan called for two pillars of support to carry it out. The first was to build our tourism industry network, and the second was to professionalize our marketing. Over the next three years, we did hard work executing this plan. Next slide, please. The first step in building our tourism industry network was hiring me to prioritize outreach to local partners and establishing relationships with these partners throughout Polk County. I then began to leverage, leverage these local relationships to support our twenty twenty-four Wisconsin Department of Tourism Matching Funds Grant. From there, I began investigating new ways to increase local revenue for tourist promotion. Furthermore, in our ongoing effort to strengthen the tourism industry network in Polk County, we undertook the plan to do a twenty twenty twenty-five, a twenty twenty-five spring tourism conference. And we are pleased to announce that that will be on April seventeenth here at Camp Wappa Gasket Conference Center, right in Amory. And you're all invited. Next, please. The second pillar of our strategic plan focused on professionalizing our marketing. First, we applied for and secured a highly competitive Wisconsin Department of Tourism Matching Funds Grant specifically for our spring campaign, which is what we're going to talk about today. Next, we developed a Polk County brand strategy framework based on research from the University of Wisconsin and aligned it with, with Wisconsin's state brand as well. We then adjusted our budget to enable us to contact, contract local services from Linda Schober Marketing and Design. Linda subsequently created our spring marketing campaign, which our research estimates will increase visitor spending in the county by three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars in twenty twenty-five alone. There'll be residual gains from this campaign going on for years, what we're doing today. We're pleased to announce that this comprehensive spring marketing campaign was successfully launched just three days ago on March fifteenth. And now to share more details on the campaign, I'd like to introduce Linda Schober.
And thank you. I'm super excited to have the opportunity to present here to you tonight. My name is Linda Schober, as Brad said, and I've owned Linda Schober Marketing and Design for almost twenty-five years now. And I am based here, right here in Polk County. So I work across many different industries. Just a little bit about me, bringing a mix of traditional and modern marketing to my clients. I work with regional and national, and even a few international clients. But I'm actually fortunate to do a lot of work right here in Polk County through my agency. fortunate to do a lot of work right here in Polk County through my agency. You can, next slide, please. And then, next one. Thank you. And I've done about a decade of work in the tourism industry by being the agency of record for the Room Tax Committee of St. Croix Falls, leading the tourism effort in branding and marketing for the city. Next slide, please. When I heard that Polk County Tourism was looking to make changes, I reached out. And in late 2023, I was hired to create a full-scope marketing plan that was ultimately used to secure a destination marketing grant from Travel Wisconsin, as Brad mentioned, as well as additional funding from those of you in this room. During that same time, I developed a 13-page brand strategy framework. I was hired to do that to lay the foundation for the brand re-imagination for Polk County Tourism. To be sure that this was done with the best practice in mind, I pulled from my client work from a decade worth of tourism industry as well as a 2022 research study contracted by the Polk County Tourism Council that Brad has mentioned before and carried out by the University of Wisconsin La Crosse. And Brad has a copy of that document that he's gonna send to all of you. So, once the GEM grant was approved, I was again contracted to develop, create, organize, and execute the first ever large-scale marketing campaign for Polk County with the goal to drive visitor traffic to our county for 2025 spring shoulder season travel. This endeavor was started by developing a new brand, one that would tell us, tell the story of what our visitors would experience when they arrived. It needed to lean into the core idea of the brand strategy, experience it all. To develop Polk County as a top-of-mind destination, we needed to create a narrative around the fact that we don't just have one type of Midwestern activities, we have them all. I don't need to tell the people in this room that our natural resources and amenities bring a full palette of fun. Gorgeous riversways, gorgeous riverways, hiking, biking, power sports, boating, fishing, over 400 lakes, ski resorts, trails of all kinds, horseback riding, agritourism, but I could go on and on. So how do we tell that story? And how do we make it click with our target market? We build a brand around that theme. So branding personifies a travel destination. A brand gives you more than just a look. It expresses a voice, a personality, and values. It's what hooks you in, resonates with the right people, and leaves a lasting impression. Ultimately, an intentional brand gets to tell the story of how they want to be remembered in the mind of the traveler. Next slide, please. Experience it all refers to the summation of not only all of the activities, but all of the unforgettable moments made during their stay. By leading with the word experience, we're inviting our visitors to take one more step beyond discover. We're asking them to create memories here, make that emotional connection, to be enveloped in the unforgettable, to leave with moments of joy in the heart, to encourage them to return again and again because the fun just does not end with one activity. And this is an important distinction to make, that we don't just intend to market the resource, activity, event, or attraction, but we intend to hook into the moments and connections made while engaging in these activities and build on the idea that our visitors will leave with the memories across a multitude of different experiences. Next slide, please. Of course, all brands need a logo, and we took these ideas into consideration to create something unique and special for Polk County Tourism Brand. Logos were developed, and when I say logos, I mean plural because you need a library of graphics to work across different platforms as well, as well as a color palette and matching secondary illustrations. And nothing I do is without good reason, and this logo is no exception. Next slide, please. We're gonna take a quick logo dissection. So first of all, we needed to develop a sense of place. We need to tell people where Polk County is. So using the state of Wisconsin outline, this is the primary logo. We are telling people where Polk County is with an immediately recognizable illustration. Using a stylized location pin in the western part of the state, we are also letting our audiences know which part of the state we're in. Iconic and nostalgic travel. Map points and road signs, road signs hearken simpler times and a getting away from it all that our visitors have indicated are important to them. Use of typography, fonts and letter forms give a travel and adventure feel while leaning into the vibes and nostalgia. Bold and blocky and slightly distressed give a handcrafted feel. We have a chance to be memorable with this logo. Highlighting the Polco in Polk County gives our visitors a way to improve recall by using alliteration and giving a fun way to build a nickname for our area. Colors, lively yet grounded. The earthy color selections are grounded in the outdoors. Moss green, lake blue, sunset orange, farmland golden, and rich browns, and when brought together, inspire liveliness that tells of culture, arts, music, road trips, and events. And it gives the feel of the mid-century travel advertise. And a little bit of fun. Oh, don't you know, some things are just a given when you experience or when you visit Wisconsin, supper clubs, fish fries, and the long "O." This logo has a little subtle fun with Wisconsin culture by putting what's called a macron over the vowel "O" to highlight that you pronounce "Poco" with the quintessential Wisconsin accent. We also have it on repeat down here. You get a chance to repeat the macron element by using it to highlight the word "all." So next slide, what makes a good logo? Distinctive, appropriate, practical, memorable, timeless, versatile, scalable, graphically simple, this is all what comes together to create a good logo. Our goal was to educate the audience where Polk County was located and build on the experience or the brand story of experience at all. This logo is lively, fun, modern, outdoorsy Wisconsin culture, hint of vintage, vintage travel and a sense of excitement. Now you're gonna start to see how this logo is ending or is appearing in the brand. For this particular campaign that was funded by you and the GEM grant, the campaign demographics are very specific. This campaign targets Twin Cities residents, primary 35 to 44 with kids, and secondary 25 to 34 with or without kids. So basically families. And we did, we just launched this campaign on Saturday after a whole long year of creating. And what you're gonna see in the next few slides are digital billboards, streaming TV ads, digital ads, experiential marketing, influencer engagement, and public relations. So you're gonna see how all of this is gonna come together. So step one, we had to build an image and video library. So, the images and photos for this campaign took four full days of shooting with a multitude of Polk County locations, talent, and local businesses that all agreed to let us shoot on-site. We had horses, we had boats, we had, you know, I contacted Riverwood Canoe and they, right there with a canoe and brought it right down to the landing so that we could film. You know, Dallas House, they cooked up steak and lobster and lettuce and lettuce and fish fries and old fashions and let us film right there. It was, it was absolutely amazing. Ward's Resort, Ward's Resort said, come on out. You know what? We'll build you a fire. We got the dock for you. We'll clear a cabin. We'll let you go in there. So it was really fantastic to have such great banding together of everybody. Next slide, please. So then step two, the next step is to build the creative assets in order to tell the brand's story. And so, the first thing you're going to see is out-of-home media. That's another word for billboards. So these all of, or this is a sampling, I should say, of all of the billboards that are out in the Twin Cities market right now. There are nine locations on major roadways with 15 different messages to our targeted audience, telling people to come on over and experience it all. All the adventure, all the wonder, all the exploring, all the whimsy, paddling, playing, memories, Wisconsin traditions, all the views, and it kind of goes on. You see how this is kind of laying out with our brand. The other thing that we're doing really, really quick is that we're taking those same ads, and when people drive by a billboard, they have what's called a view shed. And so when they're driving in that view shed, of course, they're seeing the billboard, but if they've got their phone with them, what that view, what that billboard is doing is it's, it's tagging them. It's a little bit creepy, but it's true, tagging that phone. And then later on, when they get home, they see that same ad pop up. And so they're seeing it as they drive by, and then they're seeing it again when they get home. So this just provides us another touch point for billboard advertising. Next, we did a whole campaign of digital media, and that includes display ads, which are those ads that you see when you visit other websites and it kind of pops up, all with the same kind of a branding that you see there. Paid social, and that's gonna include everything on the Meta Network, Facebook, Instagram, TikTok. And then I talked about the mobile ads. That does actually fall into this category. And the other thing, I'm gonna go back up to the second thing down, retargeting. And this is when you have an ad that's been served, that person is so interested, they click on it, and then what we do is we say, oh, you see, you're interested in it, so we're gonna serve it to you again. So that we have a little bit of a retargeting budget for, in this digital media campaign. So next slide, please. We also included a little bit of fun movement in this digital. So this is the, this is the digital slideshow ad that you're gonna see on Meta, Facebook, Instagram, and TikTok, and this should be playable. This should be a little thing down. So it's a little bit authentic, which is what the best practice is for marketing on social right now. So, watch for that. Slide, please. We also did a 30-second video on streaming TV. Streaming TV means Hulu, Netflix, anywhere that you might find, you're watching TV these days probably, is where you're gonna find this, targeted within the Twin Cities to our demographic. You're also gonna find this same ad running on social platforms, so Meta, Facebook, Instagram, TikTok. So if you go to the next slide, we're gonna show you the ad.
Want to experience all the best things this spring? Say hello to your new travel destination, Polk County, Wisconsin. Here, you'll have more time for all the pedaling, paddling, and playing your family could want. You'll savor all the fresh flavors of spring after a long winter. You'll feel all the wonder, whimsy, and timeless Wisconsin traditions. And this spring, make time for all the campfires, the laughter, and the connections that matter most. Take the short drive to Polk County, Wisconsin, and experience it all.
Now you're starting to kind of how, how this is all coming together and the outreach that we are having. Another part of the campaign, and you have this in front of you, is it's called experiential marketing. So scavenger-style hunt, where we are encouraging people to come into Polk County and get them exploring all over. So on the front of the card, all we're saying that you have to do is do one of each of those six things on the card. So take a hike, go see a show at the historic auditorium, and check that box, and then they can submit that for a chance to win an overnight stay package, which was generously donated from some of our Polk County businesses. The goal here is to get boots in businesses. So while we don't have businesses on the front of this card, what we did with this part of the campaign is we asked our Polk County businesses if they wanted to provide deals or discounts, and a lot of them said, yeah, heck yeah, we do. So, you know, as it, as people come and they start to do all of these activities, they're gonna get hungry, and so they wanna go into a business. So they're gonna look up on this card, and then we have a whole list back at the website that gives them the address, because of course, we don't have enough room to put the addresses on the card, but it's on the website. And they're gonna be able to go ahead and start to visit some of these businesses. So that's putting dollars into the pockets of our Polk County businesses. We also are able to collect email addresses through the giveaway entries, which is a big deal for future campaigns for us and to track foot traffic coming in, because they have to go to the visitor center to pick up this card in order to, in order to play. And that allows us to check a box. Yes, they've come to Polk County. And how are they gonna know about this? We're gonna expand the reach of this campaign by engaging influencers, and specifically people who are on social media that have a following, that have a travel, and they target people in the Twin Cities. So they're gonna come up, grab one of these cars, take videos of themselves and their family doing this activity, post that out to their network, and then that lets people know about what we're doing with this campaign. And we're also gonna leverage PR opportunities. So, Twin Cities Live, maybe we'll be on Twin Cities Live and some of the morning shows to talk about this particular campaign. Of course, it all needs somewhere to go. So we developed a very intense campaign landing page with 29 sub-landing pages filled with a powerhouse of itinerary content. So, built to keep visitors on-page longer, because you know what? When they are on-page longer, they are more likely to convert into visitors. That's what we found. We were able to track visitor data by media, I'll get more on that just in a little bit, and onsite behaviors. So what happens to them after they come to the landing page? Are they, what are they starting to explore? The homepage, are they starting to explore lodging? We can, we can tell all of those things. And the next thing is that, next slide, please. We're going to finish developing the rest of the website. The campaign landing page is done, all of the sub-pages are done, the homepage is done, next is the rest of the website. And I encourage you, when you leave here today, take a look at it. Next slide, please. So our anticipated campaign impressions over two months, we're gonna do a lot with the amount of, with the amount of money that we spent. We're gonna have 1.2 million impressions for billboards. Mobile and streaming ads, we're gonna have 350,000. Display ads, over two, it's, it's over 200,000. I, I'm being very generous with that number. Paid social, it's gonna be at least 1.5. Some of those projected numbers are up closer to 3 million. And organic and PR, that's gonna be, to be determined as the campaign rolls out. And I don't want to forget about talking about frequency because when you have billboards and retargeting, you're talking about the visitors, they're seeing those things, you know, one, two, three, four times, and that's very, that's key because the touchpoints, the number of touchpoints matter. Campaign tracking, I wanna talk about this. I'm not gonna get too far into it, but I just wanna tell you that, I like to geek on on that a little bit, but we're using some really cool technology to track. We're using something called foot traffic attribution, and this is the ability to tell if those people who saw our ads actually visited Polk County. So we're, like I said, we're pinging their phones, putting a little bit of data in it. Yes, we have our third-party and privacy policies on the website. I wanna make sure that I, I tell you all that. And then when they cross a line, it, it tracks. And so that, that's how we're going to be able to tell the success of this campaign through foot traffic attribution. We also are doing something called UTM tracking, which I developed specialized URLs for digital media to show which media platform was clicked. So, all the traffic leads to Spring Adventures landing page, which we can track, but we could also track, and this is, I took this from today. It's showing that, you know, our mobile ads are at the top of the list today, and you know what? The Medicare, so the Meta slideshow, you know what? Those things are showing up. So when this is all said and done, I'm gonna compile all that data so that we can know exactly what worked. Next slide, please. In 48 hours into the campaign, our web traffic is up over 3,000%. We have 30,000 impressions on paid social already. We have 4,000 plays of our social video. We have 1,000 clicks to our landing page and tons of positive feedback on social. Oh, wait, can you go back one second? Sorry. I just wanted to point this out. That's our spike in website traffic, so it's awesome. Love it. All right, next up. All right, next up. So say hello to the next vacation destination, top vacation destination. Everybody should get their sweatshirts. All right, so we are here tonight to make sure that you can see the fruits of what this board is able to fund. And although Polk County tourism doesn't have anywhere close to the budgets of some of the other vacation destinations, like Visit Cook County has $1.8 million, and Dorf County has $10 million, but we were able to put the funds that we had to great use. I'm known for stretching every single marketing dollar and making efficient use of every penny for my clients, and this time was no exception. To get it done, I even put in a lot of donated time, and I know that Brad's been busting it out there, reconnecting ties, keeping the road paved so that we can carry out this new wave of tourism marketing for Polk County. So keep your eyes peeled for these ads, and I hope, like I am, that you'll be proud to be a part of creating and funding a way to bring boots and businesses to Polk County. Thank you for listening. Turn it back over to Brad.
We didn't have a lot of time today. We probably took more than we should, sorry about that. But we just have been working so long on this, and I really believe that what we were able to accomplish was fantastic. It was kind of like giving birth to this whole program. But when it popped on Sunday, and I got a text right away, watching the analytics, and she's texted me, and she says, "We're up 3,777% visits on our website." I read that in my mind, because it was too unbelievable, it's 3.7% instead of what it really was. And I thought to myself, "Well, that's not too bad. I'll take that bump." And then she pointed out that I should read it again. But the numbers in 48 hours are just phenomenal. And when she talks about View Shed, and she talks about, all it means is there's 3 million, there's a group of 3 million people in our target market just for this campaign that are seeing Polk County as a destination. And I spent time earlier in the week at the Governor's Conference on Tourism, where I met with tourism leaders from around the state and what they were doing. And we are right on for what our program is doing that is also working in other parts of the state. So with the help of Linda and her years of practice in tourism promotion, I really believe we picked the right person. And what we're getting for the money we spent is incredible. So I want to tell you about that today, and I want to make sure that you understand that we're thankful for what support we get from you guys and gals. And there's going to be some, next time I'm up here, you're going to see some more good results. So thank you. Any questions on anything to do with tourism today? Either for me or for Linda, or our president is here as well, if you have questions for Earl.
Very good.
Thank you.
May I? May I? Thank you.
I just want everybody to know, you know, one of the reasons I asked Brad and Linda to be here today, because I think it's very important, more important than ever, for Polk County to be recognized, to get up there with Bayfield, Dorf County. As we heard from Neil Klein earlier, you know, we've got some issues with decline in people, businesses, and I think this is a good route for our county to go, to bring in some extra dollars.
Yeah, I think that's good. Excellent. Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thanks for your time. Okay, we've got some resolutions to consider. First one is 525. Do you want to address the resolution?
Motion to the floor for discussion.
Good. Motion made and seconded to bring in Resolution 2020, 525, to the floor for discussion. All in favor?
Yes.
VSO for this time.
This resolution is a lobbying resolution, giving support for the governor to add money to his budget for supporting county courts. This went through Public Works and Public Safety with a recommendation to approve.
Okay. Any more discussion? Motion to approve.
Show move.
Motion made and seconded to approve Resolution 525. All in favor? Signify by aye.
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 Same sign. Okay. Motion, Resolution 625, authorizing cancellation of outstanding orders. Need a motion on it?
A move to approve. Move to, there's a lot to discuss, so this move is for approval.
Okay. Seconded to approve Resolution 625. Any discussion?
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Okay.
No discussion will.
Did it go?
I'm sorry, did you? You have something?
No, just asking what you would commit.
All in favor? Signify by aye.
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 Resolution 725, right of uncollectible accounts, Golden Age Manor, need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion?
Stayed go through gen government with a recommendation to approve.
More discussions. All in favor? Signify by aye.
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 Resolution 825. Designating April the 20th of 2025 as a Work Zone Awareness Week.
Take that motion.
Motion made by Douglas.
Seconded.
And seconded by Brad. Any discussion in reference to that?
This resolution went through Public Works and Public Safety. This is a resolution that we do every year, designating this week that the governor will proclaim Work Zone Safety Awareness Week for people who are aware in work zones. In the resolution, it'll talk about fatalities in work zones, but this also went through Public Works, Public Safety, with a recommendation to approve.
Signify by aye.
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 Yes, I have one appointment to see Mr. Chair. It is for appointment for the VSO. It's a reappointment of Greg Sherway. He has been on the VSO Committee for, since 19, excuse me, 2022. He lives in Luck and is retired. He was a postmaster for 10 years, and before that, he worked for UPS for seven years. So a reappointment of Greg.
Okay, very good. Need any action from us?
We'll need a recommendation for more people to approve.
A motion to confirm.
Confirm the appointment, yes.
Administrator's appointment of Greg Sherway.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, we're in county board. Members report, we don't have a report. Much action last month due to the fact we didn't have a meeting, but there was a lot of zoning information that passed around to committee meetings. And I highly suggest that everyone follow the new zoning ordinances very closely. Soon as they're out, they should be out, and we're waiting for a response back from the DNR. But as soon as they are, I think we should get them out and take a good look at them and maybe read them once or twice. You can understand it quite clearly, because it's been controversial, and I want everybody to understand it.
On a public hearing on that, then?
There will be, as soon as it comes back with confirmation. If you have any real serious questions, ask.
Jay, could I ask you a question?
Yeah.
That information that's coming back from the DNR, that's just a preliminary review. That's not, that's not the review that it will have to go through, and it will not go before the board to be voted on yet.
Not going to vote on it yet.
I mean, that's, it's something that we've never done before. We've not done a pre-approval, this is a pre-approval with the DNR, not an approval from the DNR, but a pre-approval.
Yes, it'll still go, it'll still go. Once we get the comments back from DNR and their comments, it'll still go back to committee for public hearing before it goes to the county board for final confirmation. And then, once the board approves, then it goes to the DNR for the official certification.
That's why I suggested we read it. Everyone read it.
And it was agreed that contractors could still come during the public hearing, which they've already done once, and make their comments and suggestions for any changes, because none of the comments that were made from the contractors were incorporated into that version that went down to the DNR.
Yes, was our intent?
They were.
Okay. Administration, do you have anything to report?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Just a few things. Many of you have heard this. Sales tax overall, although January, January sales tax had an increase of 87.6%, which was very large, we're still in February to the positive 10% of that. However, February's sales tax was down 30% from last year in February. So we're watching to see what March does. We continue to watch executive orders. We've slowed down the hiring process with that, not knowing what federal funding is going to do for programs with a three-month look at need of positions when they become open. One of the things we're watching naturally is Medicaid. We are working on updating our finance policy. That's now, the draft went to gen gov committee. There'll be more discussion next month at gen gov. The county audit is currently in progress. They've been to Golden Age Manor and Highway already, and now circling back with the main audit for the county. Nicole Rosso has been approved for the new director of the ADRC. Laura Neve is retiring at the end of the month, and want to thank her for all she's done. On March 7, Judge Toland did his last CJC treatment court. Want to thank Judge Toland for eight years of being treatment court that now becomes, rolls over to Judge Anderson, has taken over treatment court. The museum board lost a member that passed away, Larry Stemmick. Want to thank him for, or thank the family in that, and recognize him for his work that he did on the museum board for his time with Polk County. The fair, we're still looking on track for bids here in the next few weeks. The fair has met with Rod Polk and to discuss the bids and the final plans on that. We did get a letter from Governor Evers on housing block grants. Right now, they're looking at, it calls for the housing LFR funds that are held at the local level to be returned to the state, and then they're looking at a new program to create affordable housing program to convert unutilized vacant buildings into affordable housing units. There's a seminar coming up here in April. Supervisor Duncanson will be on that to get more information on that, as well as county staff to see how it affects our municipalities with us returning, if they have any unused funds that are sitting in their coppers. Also, an update with our ad hoc committee for mental health. Tanya's been chairing that one. They've been working with Rachel Lang, Tiffany's office, and we've set up a meeting now for April 11 at 2 o'clock at the Dunn County Human Services Center, Room 54, to meet again with our legislators on that topic. So if you, you know, reach out to your legislators to make sure they're there to, at that meeting. So it's another one for budgeting and that with our local legislators. So that'll be April 11 at 2 o'clock, and I'll send this information out to all the supervisors so they know about that one right there. And that's all I have right now, and hopefully the snow stays away on this last revisit of winter again.
Supervisors, have anything that they want to add to the meeting? Or any reports?
Chair, yeah, I just have attended a number of meetings. It's Friday, I attended the Wisconsin Workforce Development County Consortium Board in Eau Claire. And something I wanted to make mention of is job service centers around Wisconsin have been closing due to funding and other reasons. And the Amory Public Library in Amory is a pilot program for a job center pod, what they call a pod. For people who need job center services will be able to go to the Amory Public Library. The staff there will be trained by workforce development to assist people in, for seeking jobs, learning what assistance they can have to develop job skills, and also in things like developing resumes. So that's a local resource that's going to be becoming available. And it also provided, these pilot programs go well, it will probably branch out to other libraries as well, given that jobs, that so many of the job centers are closing.
Steve?
This has got nothing to do with the county meetings, but we had a young man in our fire meeting a week ago, two weeks ago, no, I guess it was. A 10-year-old's name is Dalton Nelson. He was home alone. The fan in the bathroom started on fire. He knew where to find a fire extinguisher, put the fire out before his parents got home. So we gave him a plaque and stuff, you know, recognizing the youth, you know, that can think that straight and good. So it's kind of a feel-good thing.
I would think so. I would think so. Anybody else have anything?
I do. Motion to adjourn.
Okay. Second. Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Second.
Second.